Okay, good morning, everyone. We are on the record today. Well, excuse me, this is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Monday, the fourth day of January. I'm a little loud.
Sounds good.
Today is Monday, the fourth day of January 2016. We had a scheduled 10:00 a.m. start, and the clock on my cellphone is showing 10:11. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Counselperson Kuduski.
Yeah.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Yeah.
Counselperson Bajiano. Counselperson Young.
Happy New Year.
Counselperson Osborne.
Here.
Counselperson Coleman.
Here.
Counselperson Rivera.
Happy New Year here.
Counselperson Waterman.
Here.
And Counsel President LaVarro.
Here.
Happy New Year, everyone. We have nine members in attendance at 10:11 a.m. Can we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
Moses Castillo.
Roger Oldhams.
Mel Anunapat, my godfather and longtime resident of Jersey City.
Thank you very much. Kindly make standing as we salute the flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. On behalf of Counsel President LaVarro, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board on the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2016 and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, November 25, 2015. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Tuesday, December 29, 2015, at 4:00 p.m. to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Council members, I need a motion to add item 10D, Resolution 16004. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to remove two properties, excuse me, two properties from the public sale advertised for January 7, 2016. I have a motion made by Counselperson Waterman. And I have a second by Counselperson Osborne. On a motion to add item 10D, Resolution 16004, Counselperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajiano. Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman. Counselperson Rivera. Counselperson Waterman.
Aye.
And Counsel President LaVarro.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0 to add item 10D, Resolution 16-004.
Can I make a recommendation? We get somebody in the city to shut this air conditioning off?
I will have...
Own all weekend, and it's like said.
I'll call DPW, Counselperson.
Good suggestions.
Okay, on to our regular scheduled business. We're going right to second reading ordinances. Item 4A, City Ordinance 15-173, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the tax exemption of 120 River Court West Urban Renewal Company, number 230 River Court West Urban Renewal Company, number 3 H.P. Lincoln Urban Renewal Company, to implement a settlement and amendment to the tax exemption under the 2003 long-term exemption, but only as to the definition of net profit. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, and I see Yvonne Bolser heading to the podium.
Yvonne Bolser. I believe I saw this on, I didn't attend the council caucus meeting, but I did see the tax collector speak about this particular ordinance and how they're paying more money because of the settlement they have and they wanted not to be, to lose their tax abatement. Am I correct as to what this is all about?
No. What it is, is the way that the documents were drafted back when this abatement was approved, there's specific language about excess profit. And pursuant to that language, the excess profit provision has been triggered for some time, and the way the calculation worked, they were getting to a point where they were above conventional taxes. And so what we've done here is we've, we had a litigation about that issue, and as opposed to going all the way through trial on that issue, we settled the issue, and the developer agreed to let the city keep all the money that we had built based on our calculation of excess profit, but that we would figure out a bunch of solutions going forward to try and create the best possible package for the city. And one of the last steps is making sure that these three properties, which before they even get to excess profit, were already at the same or more than conventional taxes, would not come off the abatement list because that was financially better for the city. So this ordinance here makes that happen. So we've tweaked the calculation so that it makes sense for them to stay as abated.
But I believe I read this, I mean, I looked it up. They wanted to get off their tax, their tax abatement?
What we had said is if we didn't make these adjustments to the calculation, they would be compelled to terminate their tax abatement because they would be paying more money at the abated amount than they would be paying conventionally.
Okay, this is the reason why I want to talk about this. Number one, I disagree with you about that because what you're not taking into account is that once they become, if they're off the tax abatement, they become a ratable. And when they become a ratable, the tax rate, for me, goes down because when you add a ratable to the less than, we're at $5.9 billion. We were worth more on paper in 1988 after revow, when we were over six, we were like $6.5 billion. We didn't have this development years ago, 27 years ago, and we're worth less on paper. So when the county strikes the budget, they're looking at a rate that is lower than 1988. And that's the reason why my, the tax rate is around $75 instead of being $30 something dollars when revow happened. I totally disagree with you. Yes, the city may be able to, in a short while, lose that money, but revow is going to happen eventually. You can't stay it off. And they will go up, and the rate base is going up. The city is suffering from a low ratable base. And this is something else I want to bring up to you, is the fact that I, they have more or less doubled the amount of money in rents since the abatement went into effect. So the reason why they're making more money is because they're charging more money in rents. So we tend to, I just don't agree with the idea that the city, the cash cow will come to the city when we're suffering every year from a very low ratable base. There's no reason why 1988, the city should be worth more on paper than it is right now when the majority, 90% of development did not exist then. These abatements is hurting the regular taxpayers. In the long term, they should be off this, and they should have a conventional taxes. If I can pay $8,000 on a two-bedroom condo, then why, I am, then they can pay, they can afford to pay full taxes here. It's absolutely wrong how we're thinking short term, short term, and then when the next budget comes up, we're having a problem with the budget. The problem with the budget is that the city's ratable base should be around $20 billion. That's the real ratable base, but we're having it below $6 billion because, oh, we're going to get the money upfront. But in the meanwhile, the Board of Ed keeps going up, and the county keeps going up. So I, I read this stuff very well, and I watched what the tax collector said, and I totally disagree with your math. Ten years down the road, we'll be getting more money for this property if it's a regular ratable. And down the road, it will happen. It's not going to, and we're thinking short term, that's all I can say. And I suggest to let them become a ratable base, let the revow go through, and we will down the road get more money. Because everyone, you know, we're like playing games. There's everybody else, which I belong in that group, and then there's the developers. And why are we treating them different? Why are we, why is there a separate class for developers that they should be protected some kind of way? And their business should be protected, and the people who live in there. And I remember when they, this was executed, and I remember what they were charging in rent. And that's why they have excess profits, because they're charging more money in rents, which I have no problem with that. But it's not excess profits. They want to get off the tax abatement because they realize in the short term, in the short term, it benefits them. But in the long term, it benefits me as a taxpayer in Jersey City if they become a ratable. And I want to know, if you have the numbers, what would they, what would those buildings be if they were added as a ratable to the county tax row, to the city's really tax row? What would they be in terms of the numbers? Do you have that?
No. Yes, we do. We have a chart here, and we're looking at three buildings, H.P. Lincoln, 30 River Court, and 20 River Court. And what you'll see is that using 2014's numbers, the assessed value for H.P. Lincoln is $7 million. The conventional taxes is $530.
I didn't answer that. I asked what would they be if they were a...
I actually don't respond to questions. I'm just giving you information.
No, that's misleading. I, that's not how the county strikes the budget. The county strikes the budget by how much, you know, I was in the, in the meeting when Mayor Steve Phillips came in and says taxes went down the first time. The reason why he said that, because some abatements expired. When the abatements expire, they become a ratable. I wanted to know what would they be in terms of their value on the ratable base, not what they pay in taxes. I didn't ask that question. What is their, what is their value when they expire as a ratable? What would they add to this, what would they add in terms of, would it be $10 million? Would it be $5 million? What would they be as a ratable adding to the tax rate? Not what they pay in taxes. Because that, that go, that's ebb and flow. What is their ratable base? That's what I want to know. I know what my ratable base on my property is. What is their ratable base? That's what I wanted to know. And if you can't give me that number and tell me what they're paying taxes, that's not what I asked for, because I've read that myself. And that's just, that's just showmanship. That's like one of these little magic shows. So the city should have had, not to attack you personally, the city should have had for me as a taxpayer to tell me what their ratable base should be when the county strikes the budget. And they don't have that information. I wanted to know what those buildings would be if the abatement was to expire, and they were added to the county tax rate, and the county strikes the budget for Jersey City, what would it be? Right now, we're still below $6 billion. Will we pass the $6 billion at that point? That figure shouldn't be here for me to ask that question. Because I know how the game is played. They say, oh, we're getting more money. And in the meanwhile, every year, we're suffering through a budget because the ratable base is, 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 is garbage. The ratable base is not there. The fact that we were worth more in 1988 on paper does not make sense at all. And I remember Councilman Steve Phillips arguing, my argument, saying that, when he was councilman, that this was wrong. Now the reverse is done. Yes, let them expire. Let them add to the ratable base because in the long run, it's going to help me, and more money perhaps will go to the Board of Ed, which is a serious problem if the, if the state has their way and decided, Jersey City with all its abatements doesn't even need money from the Board of Ed because you're giving us so many tax abatement. And I'll be very honest, if I was the state, I'd be saying the same thing too. You're giving away your ratable base. You don't need any other things from the county. So do you have those figures or not?
We should not have the county ratables.
I want to know what would it be if it was expired and it was added to the county ratable base?
As I started by saying before you interrupted me, the assessed value on H.P. Lincoln is $7 million, 7.1 million. The assessed value on 30 River Court is 35.5 million, and the assessed value of 20 River Court is 25.8 million.
Because that's a lot of money added to the ratable base. We're talking about roughly something like $60 million, and, and that's before revow. So when revow happens, you can multiply that by three. There'll be $180 million added to the ratable base. Down the road, we're cutting off our nose to have a little bit of extra money because it comes directly to the city. If you want to lower my taxes, have it become a ratable. When it's a ratable, my taxes drop because it's added to the pot. Now, I know math is confusing to a lot of people. Math should not be that confusing. But the higher the value the city is, the lower my taxes. As an example, Hoboken went through their revow, they're worth $11 billion for a city of 50,000 people. We're worth on paper less than $6 billion. That does not make sense at all. So their tax rate dropped down. So what we're doing is, in my opinion, is wrong. You should say no on this because in the long run, you're helping the citizens of Jersey City. Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Next seat to Billy Tyary.
Happy New Year, good morning. I just basically have some questions, and I'll start backwards. On number three, H.P. Lincoln Urban Renewal, what's the address for that location? Property number three. You see 20 River Court, 30 River Court, what's the address for H.P. Okay, who is the law firm representing, I'll assume that the properties are owned by the same entity?
Jeremy.
Not necessarily the same exact entity, because each abatement has to have its own urban renewal, but there's similar partnerships in all of them. They're represented by the Dakota's Law Firm, among others.
So it's three different partnerships?
Three different urban renewal entities.
Yeah, okay. When, what year was the abatement executed?
So just to go back to, H.P. Lincoln is 204 10th Street.
204...
10th Street.
10th Street?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yeah. What year was the abatement executed?
Different years for, for them, and if you look at the fact sheet for the, it does provide it.
1997.
Two were done in 97, and one was done in 94.
1997 for two, 1994 for one. Let me say this, that one of the things, the reason I keep raising that we need a moratorium on the tax abatements is because, I'm trying to remember what year it is, but I do know either the last year of Coasean or the first year of, of our present governor, that the governor's office and the New Jersey Department of Treasury made a decision that Jersey City did not need its full municipal aid, nor its full school aid, because we had enough ratables to carry ourselves. That was officially said to us in an official meeting with the mayor, myself, business administrator, I'm trying to think of who, and the corporation council. So be very cognizant that Ms. Bolser's statement that she made was not something out of the air. I can say to us for a fact that that is how the state has been looking at the city of Jersey City for some time. So thank you for the information. And again, I do want to just say this, one of the things we did at the Quanso Program this year was to, in the memory, was to dedicate this year of change in memory of all those murdered victims. So again, Happy New Year. Thank you for the information.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Motion made by Counselperson Coleman, seconded by Counselperson Osborne to close the public hearing. On a motion to close the public hearing, Counselperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman. And Counsel President LaVarro.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries 9-0 for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-173. Counselperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
You know, it sounds like by short-term, city of Jersey City collect $640,000 more than conventional tax.
Right.
You know, but the short term is like that. And if we not give them the proof to change the definition of excess profit, they're going to voluntarily revoke the tax abatement. But actually, it cannot going to be happening. If tax rebow, maybe this year, next year, they're going to pay far more than what they claim now. So when I look at it, this is wrong, it's about time, and, you know, all those developers, when they benefit to the tax abater, they live with that, meaning they're not feel like they lose some dollars, they come up, the city council asks a man to maximize their profit. And they're already, they're going to pay excess profit for almost $1.8 million. So we can see that, what kind of benefit they get from all those years with tax, I mean, tax abatement. So I'm going to say no.
Okay, Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
I just have a question. When, I see it says 30-year, when does the tax abatement expire? In other words, it's 30 years, right? When is it over?
I think by 2020.
2020?
Yeah. 2020 or 2025. I think it's 24, 27. 30 years from 97 and 30 years from 94.
Counselperson Rivera. Counselperson Waterman. And Counsel President LaVarro.
Yeah, I'll just quickly say that our caucus, you're right, Yvonne, there are short-term considerations here. And so the tax collector made it clear that we would have, that if it reverted back to conventional taxes, that we would see $1.4 million in 2015 in taxes, not realized revenue. And that in 2016, we'd be looking at a $3.4 million, I forget the exact number, of over $3 million additional revenue deficit, which would be incumbent on the city to fill. So for those reasons, it's in our best interest, I think, financially, short term, to definitely vote aye. I vote aye.
City Ordinance 15-173 is approved, 7-2, with Council members Bajiano and Young voting no.
Steve, can I just ask one question? Did you say that was $7 million that we would not realize in these two years?
1.4 in 2015, and 3-plus...
Oh, 4.
Yeah.
About 4-point something, right?
Something like that, over two years.
Okay. On to our next second reading ordinance, item 4B, City Ordinance 15-174, an ordinance approving the five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 40A, semicolon, 21-1, Exec, and Section 304-9 of the Municipal Code for Property Designated as Block 13003, Lot 1, Qualifier C, 3.90, commonly known by the street address of 90 Columbus Drive. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Who is the owner?
Billy Tyary. Sorry. Go ahead, Billy.
Who is the owner? This is Michaels?
Wait, is the attorney here, no, this is 90 Columbus.
The ownership of this property is a partnership among Panapinto Properties, Iron State, Council Congressman Guarini, and Mr. Kimmelman. They all have interest in this project, as they do for 70 Columbus, 80 Columbus. This is the third phase of that, that overall development.
This, this five-year exemption, when was it first executed, Counselor? No, through the president, when, when was it first executed?
This is our first. This is a new building.
Okay. So it was done this year?
This is being done right now, before we approve it.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, thank you, Counselwoman, that's, that's what I mean, because some of them you can do afterwards.
We've closed that loophole. There's no, there's no post-construction abatements anymore.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we closed that loophole.
Good, good. Okay, thank you.
This, this, I got to say it, this is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? Motion made by Counselperson Waterman, seconded by Counselperson Osborne, on a motion to close the public hearing, Counselperson Kuduski. Counselperson Ramchow. Counselperson Bajiano. Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne. Counselperson Coleman. Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman. And Counsel President LaVarro.
Aye.
Motion to close the public hearing carries 9-0 for final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 15-174. Counselperson Kuduski. Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
Aye.
Counselperson Osborne. Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Aye.
Counselperson Waterman. And Counsel President LaVarro.
Aye.
City Ordinance 15-174 is approved, 9-0. On to our resolutions. Please allow me to read them into the record since we didn't have a caucus. Item 10A, Resolution 16-001, a resolution authorizing approval of the calendar year 2016 temporary budget. Item 10B, Resolution 16-002, a resolution adopting the calendar year 2016 cash management plan for the city of Jersey City.
Excuse me.
Item 10C, Resolution 16-003, a resolution of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City authorizing the acceptance of a grant for the Sheer Our Strength, also known as SOS, and the Department of Health and Human Services for the Cooking Matters at the Store program. Item 10D, Resolution 16-004, is a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to remove two properties from the public sale advertised for January 7, 2016. Council members on items 10A through 10D, Counselperson Kuduski.
Aye.
Counselperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Counselperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Counselperson Young.
Before I do that, let me ask a quick question for the 10A cash management plan. So 2000...
10B.
About 2015, based on our cash, cash management, so what kind of, actually, we get the own interest or any profit? 2015, through our cash management, we invest some money from here and there, so what kind of actually income we have, revenue?
How much?
Revenue we have on.
Revenue?
Yeah, interest, any, any investment?
You know, probably a million dollars in interest last year.
Million dollars?
Right. I mean, I'll have to check the revenue reports for last year.
Yes, I'm very interested because when I read it, the guideline...
Rates aren't that good right now, so...
Yeah. We know that, but I, we can also invest, not only in the bank, but also we can invest like some kind of mutual fund, so on so.
Those are options that are available within the cash management plan.
I'd like to see that.
That the Treasury Department and our CFO work on.
Yeah, please, okay? Then I vote for aye, A to D.
Thank you. Counselperson Osborne.
Aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
Before I vote on the new item that was put in for removal of two properties from the tax sale, I would like to say publicly that 90 Virginia Avenue was promised to this council to be completed in 2014, and it wasn't completed. And I don't know what the problems were, but I don't think enough notification of those issues were presented. And I would ask corporate counsel to give this person, you told me three months, in three months, if it's not done, it goes back on the sale. Is that clear? I vote aye. I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
I, I have a funding question for the BA. When is the anticipated, uh, time of dissolution for the JCI?
So, uh, as you can see, in, in this temporary budget request, there, there is some funding available for JCI. Uh, that's approximately six weeks worth of funding. Uh, at some point today, I will be meet, uh, on a conference call with Civil Service to try to finalize some of the, the title issues we've been having with, uh, some of the employees coming over. Uh, first of all, Civil Service has apologized immensely for how slow the process has, has been going on. Uh, they were not anticipating the, the amount of work involved in this. But we, hopefully today, we have 98% of the titles done. The last 2% will be done today. Once we agree to that, you know, they will put us on the Civil Service Commission's agenda for approval. Uh, there are two meetings this month, we're hoping to be on the first one. Um, if not, it'll be the, the second, which will be later, I think, January 20th, no later than that. And once that happens, I would imagine we would then, you know, give the employees 30 to 45 days' notice, uh, once we get approval. So right now, we have six weeks' worth of funding. Hopefully, that's, that'll be enough. If not, there might be a minor adjustment, uh, you know, later in January's meeting or first meeting in February to increase. But I would think, uh, by mid-February, this thing's over.
Sean?
Yes.
I didn't vote, you didn't ask me.
I, I did, I did ask you.
No, I never said anything. Of course, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask.
I...
I didn't vote on it.
Okay.
Uh, they just handed us the new, the new paperwork on the budget, the temporary budget. And I noticed the police department was taken down by 2 million, and, uh, the, uh, fire department was increased by, uh, um, the police was 23 million, okay, now it's, okay, 25 million. The fire department was 15 million, now it's 17 million. All right, that's one. And then the other thing I just want to know is, uh, recreation, parks and maintenance, has been increased from 611,000 to 935,000. Uh, the, uh, police budget and the fire budget is, uh, good, but actually, I hope this year, they increase both of their budgets. We hire more firemen, and we definitely need many, many more police in this city here. All right, I vote aye.
Councilperson Rivera, your vote?
I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council... President LaVarro.
Yeah, before, before we close this, um, unrelated to the agenda, for the next caucus meeting, express scripts, right?
Yep.
We're going to have them over here?
Can we please have them?
Oh, yes, they're, they're scheduled to come in. I'm having a, a call with them, actually, today at 2 o'clock to kind of express your concerns and have them prep for next Monday.
Um, could, could you just see if we could do either or? Meaning, I don't feel we should be mandated to, to have to use them. I feel we should be able to go to our own pharmacy if we choose to do that. Um, so can you see if that, because, okay.
Okay. And then, um, just on 10A, uh, to the BA, um, so on 10A, we discussed the, the public library, just reminding them that, uh, this funding does include the funding for...
For CAS.
CAS, yes.
Okay.
Um, a prorated, whatever the prorated amount is for...
Right, we will discuss with the, the library director that, you know, it is the council's intention to fund them between 97 and 100,000 dollars in 2016. Therefore, a prorated amount of the temporary budget should be made available to CAS for any programs that go on over the next three months.
So let me ask you something, if, if the library has to cut, shouldn't she have the right to cut to force divorce? I want to make sure that's clear.
Oh, yeah, that's why I said 90, we raised for, like, a percentage cut, so last year was 100,000, I think it was like 93,000.
I don't like her being held hostage. Right. Especially since now we've made steps for them to be self... Right. Uh, self-standing. I, I don't think that she should be held hostage for other programs, like literacy programs and other things that she has in there that are great. I don't think that she should be held hostage, so I don't know. I, I tried to make that clear last year, and she was held hostage anyway, but I, I'd like for her not to be held hostage.
Fair enough, as long as we're all on the same page, I'm with you.
Okay.
I think we're all on the same page.
Well, last question is, uh, Jersey City Employment is retirement fund for 3 million dollars? It's a what, it's a...
That's the city's pension system, so we make...
Pension?
Yeah, that's the monthly payment to the pension fund.
Okay, so not like, uh, retirement to, no, not like a last...
The city has its own pension system, that's a percentage to fund it for the next quarter.
Okay, see, thank you.
Council President, your vote?
Yeah, and just on, uh, 10D, thank you on 29 Astor Place, just for the record, I didn't have anything to do with 90 Virginia Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Okay. With 29 Astor Place, thank you to the law department for moving it.
The council president said it didn't have anything to do with, uh, 90 Virginia...